Good evening and welcome to the Columbia Heights Public Schools Board Meeting for Independent School District thirteen for Tuesday, May twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen. If you can call the meeting to order at seven o'clock, and if you would, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Okay, thank you. Lori, would you do the roll call, please?
Yep, Nichols.
Here.
Palmer.
Here.
Larkin.
Here.
Landwehr.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Thank you. Well, good evening again, and we have a very full agenda with lots of exciting stuff tonight, so we'll go ahead and get things started. We'll begin with our mission statement. Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. And we'll start the evening off with our Heights Lights. We have a couple different people to recognize tonight. We'll be recognizing our Athena Award winner and also the Oscar Ing Award. The Athena Award is given to the best all-around female athlete at Columbia Heights High School each year. Nominations are solicited from administration and head coaches. Athletes usually compete in more than one sport, have made significant contributions both on and off the field, and have participated in community services. Winners display athleticism, competitive edge, academic focus, and community involvement. And for the Athena Award winner, we have Quincy Gross, and if you wouldn't mind coming up, please. The Oscar Ing Award was a longtime, Oscar Ing was a longtime educator-administrator for Columbia Heights School Districts for three decades. Sorry, Quincy. He served as assistant principal for a number of years and was the first athletic director for Columbia Heights. The award is given to a student-athlete who has exemplified hard work and effort not only on the athletic court or field, but also in the classroom. The recipient is a student who has excelled in effort and attitude and working towards achieving the best that he can. And our winner this year is Ibrahim Ibrahim. Come on up, please. Those are very well-deserved awards, and you both, you're sure you don't want to talk, right? Yeah, okay, all right. Congratulations, thanks for coming, and I appreciate it. Okay, we'll go ahead and keep moving forward. Next up on the agenda is the Agenda Approval Adjustments Announcements and Correspondence. Start off with the approval of the agenda. If I could get a motion for that, please.
Motion.
By Grant, second.
By Ken.
Was that Molly? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Announcements, June fourth will be Thursday, the last day of school for the students. June fourth, seven p.m., high school graduation. June ninth, at five p.m., the school board will be participating in professional development here in the community center, I believe, is where we'll be. Also, June ninth, we will have our regular school board meeting. June sixteenth, at five p.m., the school board will have a subcommittee on policy meeting. Also, on June sixteenth, at six p.m., school board work session. And then, June twenty-third, Tuesday, at seven p.m., will be our regular school board meeting. As far as correspondence.
Mr. Chair members, there's no correspondence at this time.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, communication to the board. Citizens and employee representatives, at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that administration follow-up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. So, anyone here that would like to communicate to the board? Okay, we'll keep moving. Next up is the consent agenda, and that includes the personnel report, and I would need a motion to move this forward, please.
Someone.
By Lori?
Second.
Second by Grant. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is acknowledgement of contributions, and this is a resolution. And if I could get a motion to move this forward, I'd appreciate that.
Someone.
Ted.
Second.
Second. Lori, and I'll read the resolution. Acknowledgements, acknowledgement of contributions resolutions. Whereas Minnesota Statute one-two-three-B point oh-two permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district, bequest donations or gifts for any proper purpose, and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the school board of Columbia Heights Public Schools, Independent School District number thirteen, that the board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of fifteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty-one cents. The detailed background in monetary, a donation of one thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars was made to Highland Elementary by Donors Choose for a Field Trip to the Minnesota Zoo. A donation of two hundred and eighty-five dollars was made to North Park by Financial One Credit Union for a bus trip. A donation of two hundred and twenty-nine dollars was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools by Medtronic's Inc. for student needs. A donation of one thousand, twenty-six dollars and ninety cents was made to Valley View Elementary by Box Tops for Education for Student Needs. A donation of three hundred and twenty dollars was made to Valley View Elementary by Wells Fargo Community Support Campaign for the student needs. A donation of six hundred and twenty-two dollars was made by Two North Park Elementary by Target Take Charge of Education for the student needs. A donation of three hundred dollars was made to the North Park Elementary by North Park PTA for the play. The following donations were made to Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Program. Pete Herilla, two hundred and fifty dollars. John Rockwell, two hundred and fifty dollars. Megan and Cameron Nelson, four hundred and fifty-five dollars. Mary Lothrup, twenty-five dollars. Jean Henkels, twenty-five dollars. Barbara St. Peter, forty dollars. Jean Rath, ten dollars. Alyssa Boquist, twenty-five dollars. Pamela Sagertson, twenty dollars. Michelle Edwardson, seventy dollars. Suzanne Bloberger, one hundred dollars. Mary Matthew, fifty dollars. Janice Olson, twenty-five dollars. Dorothy Larson, twenty-five dollars. Jane Pagenkoff, twenty-five dollars. Cheryl Sawyer, twenty-five dollars. Lorraine Spears, twenty-five dollars. Dean and Joyce Bliss, two thousand and twenty dollars. David and Cindy Halleck, fifty dollars. Warren and Michelle Magnuson, fifty dollars. James Halleck, fifty dollars. Jennifer Halleck, fifty dollars. Jane Halleck, one hundred dollars. Michael Magnuson, a hundred dollars. Pamela Zimba, a hundred dollars. William Yost, five hundred dollars. And the Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters, five thousand dollars. Donations of art, value and kind. Donation of arts applies to the Columbia Heights Schools from David Yantos, estimated value of five hundred dollars. Donation of four iPad minis and accessories to Highland Elementary from Donors Choose for kindergarten class, an estimated value of one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-one cents. Total fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen monetary contributions to date, a hundred and one thousand dollars, a hundred and one thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars and fifty cents. Well, and with that being said, I could have a roll call to accept, please.
Sure. Palmer?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Landwehr?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Well, thank you to everyone throughout the course of the year that speaks volumes for our community. Next up is discussion reports and information items. It's reports from members of the board. Board members will report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Molly, it's okay if we start with you?
Sure. I had an opportunity to spend a morning over at Highland for their track and field day. Was also over at the high school for their fifth grade all-district track and field day. A lot of track here. I also attended some varsity and junior varsity track meets and went over to Silverwood to see the Expressions Art Show, which was fabulous, really nice, the work out there. That's it.
Okay. Lori?
I attended the work session last week and the employee reception prior to this meeting. And that concludes my report.
Ted?
I attended the chair meeting prior to this meeting, the Employee of the Year Reception. Also attended the work session and chamber legislative breakfast where we discussed education issues, interestingly from a DFLN Republican perspective. And then I also had the honor of giving a report on the National School Board Association seminars that I attended to the district management team and Superintendent Kelly. Reported on emerging trends in society and their impact on education and college and career readiness, the use of brainwave technology to enhance attention and learning, the use of iPads in technical education, work internship programs through a program in Missouri and also for college credit, performance-based education system in Kentucky, three-D printing, and the development of a STEAM Academy, Science Technology Engineering Arts and Mathematics Academy in a high school in Plano, Texas. So, thank you for that opportunity. And then also attended the arts show at Silverwood and was very impressed as well. Lots of great performances as well as visual arts. That's it.
All right, thank you. Grant?
I went to a North Park PTA meeting. I went to the varsity baseball sections and varsity softball. Sad they lost, but it was a really close game, so they kept it very competitive. Went to the Expressions Art Show at Silverwood, but I guess the highlight for me would be the annual scholarship banquet. That was fun. I mean, I had like one of the best times there. Been a long time. I'd like to thank Dan Robleski for, you know, putting that on, and it was, oh, it was a fun night, you know? Two thousand, you know, all the kids at the high school, all the recipients, you know? It was just amazing, you know, how much our community does for the kids in this school. So, I appreciate that for them, and that's about it.
Okay, thanks. Lori?
Well, I attended the work-study session. I also attended the concert over at the academy. That was the band concert, and it was really cool this time because they actually had the women's choir sing with the band. So, that was really neat to see that the two groups, you see if maybe they can do more collaboration in the future, because we're all about collaboration. I also attended the Expressions over at Silverwood, see more of our wonderful, talented students going out there and putting on shows for everybody, their artwork, and that was really good to see. I mean, the confidence level is just amazing with these kids. I also had a meeting also with Dan Robleski about a photo project that we'll be doing over at the high school. So, oh, and the Employee of the Year Reception, can't forget that. That was wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks. I had an opportunity to watch a couple of the JV baseball games before they wrapped up their season. Attended the work session and a chair meeting last week, a chair meeting again tonight. The reception ahead of time this evening for our Teacher of the Year. I also attended Silverwood. I concur, they have, the kids are extremely talented. They had the band and the choir there as well, where we had some entertainment along the way. I also attended the Columbia Academy Band Concert, and I was at the VFW Memorial Recognition on Monday. Had an opportunity to meet with Superintendent Kelly a couple times, and I either met with or attempted to meet with a handful of different members, so thank you for making time. Appreciate it. And that's all I have. Superintendent's report.
Mr. Chair members, Director Hollaby and I met with the Minnesota Department of Education on Indian education issues and resources. Would like to remind the board that we will be taking that on officially July one as the collaboration coordinators for that. We're looking forward to it, and we're also looking forward to any new legislation that might come out of the legislature this year or next, and maybe some additional resources. I met with the Columbia Heights Chief of Police, Scott Nidow, for coffee and conversations as this year's school year draws to a close. Attended the Columbia Heights Public Schools Academic Awards Night, and I would just like to echo what has already been said by Member Nichols, is that it was really a wonder, a lovely night, and I want to thank all who really support our students in their career and college-ready dreams and that they can achieve them. For a small community, there's a tremendous amount of support, just, and very well done. Attended the AMSD Executive Committee meeting, and the focus really at that time was on what would happen in the legislative session, and of course, it's going into overtime. So, we still don't know what we, what we, what's, how it's actually going to turn out. I attended the final district data team meeting of the year at the district center last week, and I want to thank the teaching and learning staff for getting us together across the year and looking at the data, both by building and at the district. It's very helpful, and thank you, teaching and learning staff, for doing that. I participated as a panel member in the WEMAP interviews for the executive director job over at the new WEMAP two-point-oh, and I believe that we'll be doing some more updating on that as time goes on. As Vice Chair Landwehr mentioned, he did spend some time in this very room with the management team, going over a lot of, a lot of things. It was, I thought, an interesting dialogue on some of the things that he presented and some of the things we're doing and some of the things we possibly could do, so thank you again for bringing that back to us.
My pleasure.
Attended the District Finance Committee meeting, right here in this room, chaired by Larry Petrick once again, and the group was mostly the Bill Holmgren Show, because he seemed like he had just about every agenda item save one, which was mine. So, I want to thank Bill, too, for doing, running a really nice meeting. The Expressions Spring Show this year was outstanding. The weather really played in nicely, so congratulations to the students and the staff for a delightful evening. Congratulations to our Employee of the Year. We'll be doing a little bit of celebrating, but the reception was very nice. And I, as everyone has said, I attended the school board work-study and had multiple conversations or meetings with school board members throughout the past weeks. I want to thank each and every one of you for your time.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda is the listening session. The board will be presented with information received at the May nineteenth school board listening session and discuss possibility of listening sessions for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year. And Member Landwehr, if you want to talk about, initially about the work session, the previous listening session that we had?
Sure. Member Lewis and myself were at the listening session with Superintendent Kelly and staff, and no one, no one from the community came to our work session on the nineteenth.
Okay, thank you. Is that, okay. The other thing that we were going to talk about, and I think maybe we can do this briefly, there's just thoughts on the different members as far as continuing the listening sessions for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year, and I guess I would certainly entertain any thoughts on that.
I guess I would like to see us continue. I realize we've had a few sessions where we didn't have anybody come, but we just started getting this off the ground, so I would prefer to see us continue.
Okay.
Yeah, or, I don't know, previous years, but we've had more people, so, you know, this part of the year than we did previously, so, yeah, I would like to see it continue.
And I can only speak to that, and we just started this, but from what I understand, you know, the number, we've had people actually come into the meetings, which I find encouraging. I think one of our discussions when we talked about getting this going again was, that I recall, is that we knew it would take a little bit of time, and there would be some times we might not have people show up, but if we continue to stay, you know, strong and making ourselves available in a less intimidating atmosphere. So, I mean, I personally am in favor of keeping it going, but it's, the rotation that we had set up is done, so we want to have the conversation about what we want to do with it moving forward, so. Ted, your thoughts?
Yeah, I agree. I think it's been worthwhile, and any additional opportunity we can give the public to, to give input to us is great, and there has been some very significant issues that have come up through these listening sessions that we may not have known of if we hadn't had them, so I support them.
I think I appreciate the consistency, you know, is just knowing that there's going to be a certain time, certain place, where it's, you're, you're, you're just going to have an available ear, you know, that isn't, you know, the more formality of maybe, you know, an office or a boardroom or something like that. I think, I'd also like to look at the, we had spoken about possibly, you know, so, taking it on the road to other locations as well, so I'd like us to look at that possibility perhaps in the future, maybe at a future work-study. We could look at adding one here or there, maybe at the different schools.
Okay.
You know, kind of be able to reach out maybe to, to parents, you know, that are there.
There have been districts throughout, throughout the country that have done that, that have had great results, so I think that's a great idea, making it more convenient for people to come.
Right.
I'll echo everything else. I really think that it's important for us to be available and to have that time when, given that we've had people come in the last couple of months, I'd like to see us continue as well.
Okay. Okay. And for the record, just so the people that are actually watching this understand what we're doing, is, is once a month, we make two different school board members available for people to come in and express concerns. They can come in and say good things, too, but generally speaking, come in in an atmosphere or environment that they're comfortable sitting down with a couple people. We make sure that we have one of our directors there so that the information can be taken down and acted out accordingly, and I know that the superintendent has also, when available, has, has been at them as well, and we really want to hear from people, so, and that's the idea behind it. So, if you have questions or concerns or something that you want to share with us, if not comfortable coming and addressing the board directly, it's another, I guess, avenue for you to, to come out and let us know what's going on. So, I get the sense that we're going to move forward with this, so we'll, maybe at a work session or somewhere along the way, put together another rotation where we'll make sure that we know when we're supposed to be here and be available, so. Okay. Anybody else on that before we move forward? Sure, good. All right. More fun stuff. Employee of the Year. The board will be presented with information on the Employee of the Year, and Lindsey Bennett is going to do the honors tonight.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, it's always an honor to have the Employee of the Year celebration, and this year it did go to Sarah Durst. She is the Principal-Secretary down at Columbia Academy, and she's been with the district since two thousand and five. It is the sixth year of the Columbia Heights Public Schools Employee of the Year, and what we look for when we have the voting committee, which is made up of staff members, the previous Employee of the Year, community members, people from the city. We look for a strong work ethic, positive role model, initiative and creativity, contributions to the work site, and other key characteristics. And this year, Ms. Durst received four nominations from four separate people, so I just wanted to quote some of the things that we got that the committee did see. They said she's all-knowing. You may put her to the test and recognize that she can rattle off seven hundred student names, first and last, knows every staff person's phone number extension by heart. She knows who to ask and when to ask. Students going through the middle school, students going through the middle school that Ms. Durst has had three years to know. She makes an imprint, and is witness when a high schooler comes back to visit, and just stops in and gives her a hug. She remembers former students' names as well as they remember Ms. Sarah. When she hears a student's name in the Heights news, she'll exclaim, "Ah, I remember him or her." She's incredibly kind, warm, and welcoming to everyone who walks into the office. She helps anybody who's brand-new to the building. Sarah is always willing to help in a variety of capacities in the friendliest way. She's extremely cool under pressure, very organized. She keeps her admin and staff informed about upcoming events and things that should be on our radar. This is highly important during this time of transition. Sarah is smart, talented, and always a team player. Her ability to work efficiently when not only humanly possible to do it with that amount of work in that amount of time. She simply says, "Here you go." Her stories of our cherubs, as she calls them, and a great sense of humor make each day at Columbia Academy a little brighter. So, that was just some of the quotes that we received on Ms. Durst. Sarah asked not to speak tonight, she's just too shy, but we do have a plaque, but we want to give her a big round of applause and congratulations for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen Employee of the Year.
Sure, they give me something that I can get fingerprints on. I'm sorry, Sarah. I can just, I don't know, I will just speak personally as a parent who's, has and has had kids go through Columbia Academy. Sarah is a mainstay, and she is a go-to person there, so certainly, from my personal opinion, is well-deserving, so congratulations. I really think that's great.
No, we can.
And the plaque that I got fingerprints on says Columbia Heights Public Schools Employee of the Year two thousand fifteen, awarded to Sarah Durst in appreciation for your dedication to our students, schools, and community. So, very nice.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, I guess if we're going to have a long night with lots of stuff on our agenda, it might as well be fun, things like that, and what we have coming up next as well. Next on the agenda is Principal Ford recognition. The board will recognize Principal Willie Fort for his leadership of Valley View Elementary and Columbia Academy for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. I have nothing written down, Willie, other than to say I've seen you in both schools running back and forth, and I'm extremely impressed with the challenge you took on and how you handled this year. So, for myself personally, congratulations, and I'm going to have you come on up if you would, please.
I talked one person into speaking tonight, so, hang on.
Well, thank you for the recognition. This is one of the things that I can now strike off my bucket list. Seven more days, but who's counting? It's been a unique experience, but I do appreciate challenges in my life, and at this stage- But I do appreciate challenges in my life and at this stage of my life in particular. And this has been a very unique, rewarding challenge. So thank you very much.
And for the record, those of you left to present, it doesn't mean we're not excited about you coming forward tonight either. So. Next up, the advancement via individual determination Avid program presentation. The board will be presented with information on the Avid program. And we have Xena, Willie's coming back up and Tara, are you coming too, Tara? I get everybody? Dan too?
Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, good evening. We're here to present to you information on our Avid program in Columbia Heights Public Schools. First, as a reminder to all, Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner. And tonight our focus with Avid will be on excellence and collaboration. The mission of Avid is to close the achievement gap by preparing all students for college readiness in a global society. So this evening, I'm so pleased to bring with us and present, right along with me, Coordinator Tuckrell, Principal Robleski, Principal Fort. And in a moment, we'll introduce Ms. Ronchak, teacher, and two of our graduating seniors.
Good evening, Chair, excuse me, Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. This year's senior cohort at the high school, one hundred percent of them have been accepted to college. Seventy-six percent of them have been accepted to a four-year university. And one of our students is fulfilling his dream as a United States Marine. Many of you were at the scholarship evening, academic awards, and many of our Avid students did receive scholarships as well.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, board members, Superintendent Kelly. This, as it says on the board there, this is our second year of Avid. We started with third grade, our first year, and this year we, we went to fourth and fifth grades. All of our grade levels are implementing, are implementing Avid strategies in all the content areas. They're focusing on, or what they have focused on over the last two years, note-taking, organization and higher levels of thinking. And back in the fall, we had Dr. Wendell Brown, who is the Avid Division Director, came and visited Valley View and at that time invited us to be a showcase school for elementary district directors, starting this fall, if we are so interested in doing that. So it's been an enjoyable experience. I've enjoyed it. I like all the college banners in a, in a elementary school. And I think we're, we're doing the right thing with getting kids to think about their futures.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly and members of the board. We wanted to share with you a little about next year. We're expanding Avid and we're very excited about that. We'll be including Highland Elementary, fifth grade, and we're also including sixth grade at Columbia Academy. So excited for what's to come for Avid. But tonight we really want to celebrate what Avid has done in our district. So I'd like to introduce a teacher at Columbia Heights High School, Dan Ronchak. He's a math teacher and a twelfth grade Avid elective teacher. And he's going to introduce some students and impact that Avid has had on them.
Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, I'd like to introduce two of my Avid seniors. It's been an absolute pleasure working with them this year and they would just like to tell you a little bit of what they've gotten out of Avid in their years in high school.
I'm Justin Giles and this is a little bit about me. So my mom and my dad are both from Mexico. My mom is from Distrito Federal, Mexico, and my dad is from Pueblo, Mexico. They met in California and I have three sisters. My Yelly, who graduated from St. Catherine's University and is now an RN at St. Anthony Health Center. My sister Karen, she began college in Mankato, two thousand twelve, but she, because of the distance from my family, she came back home. And now she's planning to go to a sentry and pursue a career in radiologic technology. And my little sister, Allison, goes to Valley View and wants to become a doctor in the future. I have three dogs and those are my three dogs. Yep. I'm bilingual. My grandma taught me when I was little Spanish and I'm Catholic and that's the church I go to. And I'm Mexican. So I was born July twenty-seven, nineteen ninety-seven in Minneapolis, Minnesota. And well, my sisters, my old, two older sisters, my Yelling Karen, were born in California. But my parents found better job opportunities in Minnesota, so they moved here. We lived in Minneapolis until I was one and a half years old. And then we moved to Columbia Heights. And I attended Valley View and Columbia Academy. Well, back then it was Central Middle School. So my favorite subject is math and my favorite classes overall were AP Calculus, Communication Arts and Advanced Paint and Drawing. I have a three point eight GPA and I'm graduating with high honors. My first two years, I didn't join many athletics or activities. I just joined soccer, key club and first robotics team. But my junior and senior year, I joined more activities. I did National Honor Society Link Crew, first robotics team. I was a tutor for Operation College Bound in Columbia Academy. I did soccer, Knowledge Bowl. I did the lights in the set building for Adams Family and I'm the lacrosse team manager. And that's some pictures. Over my four years of high school, I procrastinated a lot and I learned to manage my time better. And then I had a lot of trouble making friends because I'm really quiet and shy. And, but I joined a lot of extracurricular activities and I just started talking to people. And then public speaking, I used to like hate public speaking. Like I would begin tearing up every time I got in front of a public. And well, I joined, last year I did Communication Arts class and that's, we did the variety show and that kind of got me a little more open. And then my father, he is an illegal immigrant and was arrested and he's still having legal issues. And I had anxiety, I was diagnosed with anxiety and that was really pathetic. And I just try to be more optimistic. So I like to give shout-outs to my parents because they've motivated me a lot to pursue my dreams and they've raised me to be who I am today. And my sister, my Yelly, oh gosh, not a lot of the pictures. Okay. But my sister, my Yelly, she helped me with college applications and registration and she's my role model. So yeah, I look up to her a lot. And then my sister Karen, it's one of the persons, like one of the people I trust most, so I run to her. And then my little sister Allison, she's one of my greatest motivations because I want to be her role model one day. And then my cousin Carla, she helped me a lot with scholarships and because she got a lot of scholarships, so she helped me find them. And then my cousin Nicole, she is the person I trust most. And teachers like Ms. Scully, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Jungers have helped me a lot throughout these years and I really appreciate them. The Avid tutors, they've helped us answer a lot of questions, like in our TRFs where we had trouble finding the answers to. They kind of just helped them. And our Avid teachers, they helped us prepare for college, which I really appreciate. And then some friends, they just helped me get through high school. So Avid, I've been an Avid student, an Avid student, Avid student for four years and it's helped me a lot. It's helped me plan for college, college. We have gone to college fairs and college visits. We also did this spreadsheet where we just listed our top ten colleges and then narrowed it down. And then it taught me how to write effective notes before it'd be everywhere. And then now they're just more organized and how to organize myself using binders, planners, et cetera. I used to hate having planner. I hated it like a lot, but now I really, I find it really useful because now I can see what's going on. And then how to form study groups. I didn't really think you needed that in college, but then I realized you actually do. And then how to push myself to Excel. They require AP classes. And so I took AP classes, which is kind of tough, but I liked it. And then we just have this close Avid family bond, like you have your same class for all four years. And I just really enjoyed having them by my side. So my plan for the next four years, I plan to take a CNA class over the summer and become a CNA and work at the St. Anthony Health Center. My sister said she would help me get a job there. And then I want to attain, attend St. Catherine University and major in biology. I want to get into medical school and my dream is to become a pediatric oncologist, which is a doctor who treats and diagnoses children with cancer. And I want to work at Children's Hospital in St. Paul or Minneapolis one day.
Good evening, everyone. I'm John Paula Chumbray and I'm here to tell you a little bit about me. So I was born in the Philippines on June third, nineteen ninety-seven. And I came here, I moved here in the U.S. on February fourth, two thousand eleven. So I've only been here for four years. So, so yeah. When I was back in the Philippines, the education is very different. So it was sixth grade, then you go skip to high school. So I did that when I came, I was second year high school there when I came here. So I was really shocked when they moved me back to eighth grade because I thought that was back in like elementary school, which I had, I had of my education before. So when I found out that education here was more advanced and it's more like harder and you get more knowledge here, as I would say. Then yeah, I started eighth grade here, eighth grade here in third quarter, but I still managed to raise my grades up. Before I came here in Minnesota, I lived in Texas for a month because starting out, starting out new here in the U.S. is really hard for us because we have to build up. So my aunt took us in Texas to help us build up a little before we came here in Minnesota. And the reason why we moved in Minnesota is because all our papers are in here and we can't really go back to Texas because this is our state of residency. My high school education, the classes that I really like the most are calculus and physics because calculus and physics are the class, one of the hardest class, are the hardest classes in the schools, which is like very challenging and I like to challenge myself. Especially physics, when everything you have to do, you have to apply knowledge to everything. Same with calculus. If you mess up one simple, simple thing on your equation, you have to start over and you have to find different ways to solve your problem. And another, one of my, another favorite class of mine would be the United States history. I would love, I like this class because I get to debate with my friends, friendly debates. And we would talk about which president is better than which president and what they did and what, what are the drawbacks of what they did. And yeah, all math classes, I love math. My high school after-school activities, curricular activities, when I was a freshman, I joined Japanese Club, Envirathon and first robotics. Those are the only three, three curricular activities I joined because I was really shy and I really didn't want to talk to anyone when I was a freshman. But when I joined these clubs, I felt like I was part of the family already. I was a part of the club. That's why, that's why when I was a sophomore year, I joined first robotics again, which when I was a freshman, they welcomed me so much. I joined the science bowl on my junior year, which we, we hadn't, we hadn't have a science bowl since two years, since two years. So had to recreate the science bowl myself and I became a captain of the team and recreated it. And for Envirathon, we've been, I've been in this club since freshman year and I just love environmental because we, we have to apply logic to everything and it's, it's real life situation. For, let's say, this year's situation was about tree planting and how we can spread trees and conserve them. Because some trees, we have, we want tree diversity and such. So we had, we had, we had a problem and we have to come up, come up for a solution to it. And Avid, Avid, Avid is so helpful for me, especially I have no idea about college and how, no idea at all. So Avid taught me everything I want to know about college, especially Ronchak this year. I have to give him a big shout-out because I got accepted to my dream school, which is the University of Minnesota. Without his help, I wouldn't be accepted at all. And my obstacles and solutions. For me, I only lived here in the U.S. for only four years and it's really hard for me to speak English that much and understand it. Even though most of my friends say that I speak English somewhat okay, I still have like the understanding to me. To me, it's just hard to understand. And my solution to it is I started reading books like crazy. So I would have better comprehension and wrote so many essays. And Shakespeare's play, even though it's old school, I love Shakespeare's play. I have, have broken ribs in asthma. When I was little, two years old, I fell down the stairs. So I couldn't play, because of this, I couldn't play any sports in my life. Four years ago, I couldn't play any sports and I started taking swimming lesson because one of my doctor told me to take swimming to at least help my lungs get, expand and get better. So that's, that's one of my solution and now I can play at least soccer, basketball, badminton and like volleyball sports. I'm so happy that I could play these sports because I thought like in my entire life, I could never like touch a ball and play with it. So I was thankful that I solved this asthma problem with me. And obstacles and this, one of the biggest obstacles that I had in high school was AP classes and procrastinating in this. I took my first AP class when I was a soph, when I was a sophomore and it was world history. I cried in that class because I couldn't handle the load work and it was, it was just too much. It was overwhelming me. And the reason why I was like, I didn't quit that class because I just want to see how far I can do it myself and how, how far I can make it, just how, like I want to survive the class. So I passed the class both semester with an A, surprisingly. And yeah, sadly, I didn't pass the AP test. Had a high two, but yeah. Shout out, shout, shout out to my mom who pushed me so hard to just become the guy that I am right now. To my grandfather, I mean, I want to follow my grandfather's footsteps. He was a doctor and for me, my plan is not to be a doctor, but I still want to follow his footsteps with my own career. And I want to be the guy that he is, the kind of guy, how great he is, how help, how he helped people so, so much and the knowledge that he has. But in a different direction, but same thing. To my family who supported me, teachers. To my family who supported me, teachers for the knowledge that they all gave me. That like, I'm, I'm so grateful for the te- teachers, because I wa- all my knowledge came from them. And it's just like, I don't know, I, I have no words for it, it's so helpful. Uh, my college possible coach, she did help me most of the stuff. And my friends, my friends who helped me and supported me over my course in high school. Um, Avid, before I was in Avid, I was so unorganized, I, my stuff, all I do is like, when I get a handout sheet, I just shove it in my backpack and just like, the next day it's gone. Organization skill helped me succeed so much in my life. I started using binder, my planner and everything, I was, I kept, I kept on track with everything. It was, it was amazing. Um, time management, AP classes, so helpful. My speaking skills, um, not so great, but Avid helped me with it. Um, no taking skills, this especially, because what I did when I was a freshman, I copied everything on the board, which is like six, seven slides with just blobs of word. When I took Avid, it was just like, the, I have to summarize everything into tiny little chunks, which is like, it, it explains everything in that eight page, eight slides blob. And yeah, and applying for college, so helpful. Um, my plan for the next four years would be to attend the University of Minnesota and get my bachelor's degree in computer science or software engineering there. And yeah, that's basically it, thank you.
Anybody have any questions or comment, are you guys done with your part or not?
I just want to say thank you to Jocelyn and JP for sharing your stories with us this evening and for all of the hard work that you've put in. Um, as you can, as you know, Avid stands for advancement via individual determination. And um, I think the students this evening demonstrate that individual determination and then some. All of our Avid students have really worked hard to overcome their obstacles and all of our Avid teachers um, and you and the system of our school have supported Avid and for that, we're very grateful because as you can see, it's working. It's working for the kids to get to where they want to be in terms of college and career readiness. Um, Avid prepares the students not just to get into college, but to be successful once they're there. And I have no doubt that these students will be very successful um, next year and the next four years and the next 20 years, okay? So again, thank you for supporting Avid. One other thing I wanted to mention is that as we expand to other schools, um, we are, we're, we're expanding to school-wide strategies for Avid. So that it's not, no longer a select few students who are accessing the strategies and the Avid skills. But um, so for example, at Valley View, all of the third graders are ac- have access to the critical thinking skills and organizational skills. So if you have any questions for us or for our representatives this evening.
Just expanding on the, being more than just the, the current Avid students, so in the high school, the other students and at the middle school, they'll have the access to those same strategies. And where are they going to be presented to the kids, I mean, and, go ahead.
So at the secondary level, that happens through professional development for the teachers, an ongoing professional development.
Okay, good, I think that's important, so.
Like, I, I can actually cite something as well, um, I, from my training with Avid, I actually, um, the notes that they kept talking about, Cornell notes, um, I actually make it so that all ninth grade uh, students who take our intermediate algebra course, all my notes are presented in the Cornell note format. So they can start being familiar with it. So then especially our freshman Avid students, really appreciate that because then when they go to their Avid class with Mr. Cheetah, then it's just like, see, I already got Cornell notes, it's great.
I just want to take a minute to congratulate both of you and wish you well. Um, thank you for taking your time and telling us a little bit more about yourselves and the Avid program, thank you.
I just wanted to say that you guys speak wonderfully, so. Don't anybody tell you differently than us, so.
And continue that determination, that will carry you very far, so it's great to hear that.
Initially, I was going to ask when you put all your favorite classes where math was because Mr. Roncheck was sitting there. But just as you talked about the different goals and things, I realized that that wasn't the case. And I will note that the obstacles that you talked about, if in fact they were real and I believe they were, you've done a really nice job of overcoming them, whether it's the public speaking or learning a language, having been here four years. I, I, you speak well, and as, as Grant said, don't anybody tell you different because your entire presentation, I understand that you articulated really well. So I, I personally think that those obstacles, you've done a really nice job of overcoming and I wish you well in your future. Thanks for coming in, appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Next on the agenda is Strategic Direction E, Tell Our Story. Board will present with information on Strategic E, Tell Our Story. Kristen, Brian and Casey.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kathy Kelly. We're pleased this evening to come before you to discuss the strategic roadmap, Direction E, which is Tell Our Story. Our mission, uh, where we create worlds of opportunity for every learner. And certainly with this strategic uh, direction, we're talking about really including all of the learners in our community. We're focusing um, with collaboration on, on this strategic direction in particular, which I think you'll hear throughout our presentation. The Strategic Direction E focus of our time and resources, so we're really focusing on telling our story, the brand development, reputation management, and to increase partnership and enrollment in our district. The first um, item that we're looking at is the percentage of market shares, uh, school age students who live within our district boundaries, who enroll within our district. And uh, for this year, it is at sixty percent, that is a level two, so that's an area that we're still actively working on.
Um, the next part, um, we look at uh, the students and families connected using digital media. Um, this was a tough one for us to measure, um, so one of the things that, the thing that we focused it on is our parent portal, student portal. Um, and, and how actively engaged both our students and parents are connected. Um, this is one of the areas that we've grown very well in and I hope that we, or we, the things that we're doing, we will anticipate to continue to grow. As you can see, in two thousand fourteen, for parents, we only had ten percent of our parents um, actively using. That doesn't mean they had, didn't just have a login, significantly more had a login, but we're actively um, logging in and looking at the parent portal. And we increased by nineteen percent um, over this past school year. Um, one of the areas of most focus for us, where we've seen our biggest gain are the grade levels with the personalized learning initiative. So um, as we see that roll out, we can ta- I anticipate we will continue to see that number grow at a high level um, for the foreseeable future. And of course, our students engaging and, and looking at their, especially at the secondary level and looking at their grades, um, looking at where they're at and then um, having that connection um, with that poll. So they know, hey, am I on track or not? So that's a piece that they can engage in to see that. So um, definitely great growth here, not where we want to be yet, um, obviously, um, but we're moving forward.
Tell Our Story includes Columbia Heights Public School staff demonstrate district core values in their everyday work. And I'd like to just share with you some of the ways that we are making sure that all of our staff, as well as our community, are aware of what our core values. Everyone, every employee has on their ID card, the core values. As you see in our room here, we have a mission uh, statement and our core values and a banner in every room, every building, we have these. We, in our district calendar, in our district annual report, everything that we have, we are instilling our core values into that. And I'll also mention that Chair Larkin, you started out by reciting the core values, so thank you. Uh, the percentage of performing arts and activities communications, which include the mission of Columbia Heights Public Schools. We went from eighty-three percent, uh, or we are at eighty-three percent in activities, uh, we're working on that. And we're at about ninety-eight percent of our performing arts.
And I, just to point out real quick too, um, when we're talking about, uh, that include, um, we talk about our mission statement. We did add a little piece to our logo too, so when Casey's talking about our logo, um, we're transitioning um, and updating our logo, serving communities of Columbia Heights Fridley. So when we're looking at that, that is a piece that has recently changed, that may have impacted our numbers over the last, last year.
Which translates into the next, which is district published materials with uh, our logo and mission statement. Went from ninety percent to ninety-four percent and again, I think Director Hennigan's just helped explain that. If I can, just for a side, and tell our story, after listening to these two students, this is inspiring. This is the type of story that I'm going to love sharing.
Um, so for the next one, favorable responses to three universal climate uh, questions embedded into all district surveys. Um, we mainly pulled our data from the climate survey um, that is given to the students. And um, which um, was focused, was the middle school and high school this year, I believe. Um, so those are, those are the areas we were looking at. Um, students feel safe in school, do they care about school? Um, and uh, do, um, do adults care about me in school? Um, or since I care about school, I'm proud to be a, a student in school, so those are the three areas that we're looking at. Um, and we take those three areas and that data off that climate survey and we average them out, so we don't list them separately. Um, so they average out um, for growth this year from eighty-eight percent to ninety-one point four percent. Obviously, um, the data's been out there, um, there's some areas where we need to grow. Um, again, some areas we're, we're do, we're doing better um, with, you know, the, um, I feel proud to be a student or I feel safe in school, we're higher in some of those categories than others, but they average out to growth, um, which is ninety-one point four percent. So definitely something that we're continuing to improve in and obviously we're at a level five now. Um, but always, um, still room to grow, obviously. Do you want me to, so um, overall, um, you know, we've seen growth, we're right on the cusp of going into a level five for this area. Um, obviously, there's a couple um, directions where, um, or specific areas where we, we, we're at a level two or a level three and we need to, we have lots of room to grow yet. Um, but for the entire category, um, we're right on the border of being a level five. Um, so we're happy with the continued growth in this area. It was something that um, the community had told us that it was, you know, we, telling our story, getting our information out there, branding ourself was a challenge. I think it, uh, it says a lot about the work that we've done, bringing in the communication department, the work that Casey's done, um, our director man's done with uh, our mission statement and our logos and, and, and staying on message and getting that communication out is, um, you can see is, it's making an impact.
When we compare what we did five years ago, when Brian and I would come up here alone and, and now we're here with a communications director. And I think that there's evidence all around about how we really are getting the stories out. And these stories are um, significant to the work that's happening here in the district, so it's a good story to tell.
That's it. Any questions or comments from anyone?
Yeah, I would agree, over the last six, seven years, this has really been an area that's greatly improved. And um, it's great to see that we're doing well and we're trying to do better. Uh, even, even more to follow that excellence core value. I just, uh, along with having the core values out there, um, I'd like to, you know, I hope that um, those are being lived out as well. It's more than just having them out there, but taking the next step, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Um, when you pulled this, uh, did the survey for the students, was it a select few students or was it like the whole student?
No, it was pretty much the entire student body, um, six through twelve that took the climate survey.
Oh, that's great, I think that's awesome that you do that, cool.
And just the fact that you're measuring uh, is a, is a great improvement of the prior years, so that's uh, you can't improve unless you know where you're at, so fantastic.
Just a question on, I think the E one, one, did it have a comparison from twenty fourteen to twenty fifteen? And I just missed it, I was just curious, are we improving, are we staying flat, kind of where are we at?
It didn't, um, and the reason that it didn't is because um, we, we had inaccurate measurement from the previous time we did it, um, which we discovered last year, we had about almost a full two-year gap from the last time we presented. So we were missing a whole group of students in that equation, so it was skewed. Skewed to the positive, I mean, it was, it was much, much higher, um, but it was inaccurate, so it wasn't um, worth putting out there.
Okay, thank you.
I can't help but comment on Casey's comment about student success, that's, I'm so glad you said that, because that's what we're all here for and that's what it's all about, so tell that story, thank you, Casey.
If there's nothing else, thank you guys very much. I guess you get to stay, Kristen. Um, next up is targeted service update, the board will be presented with information on targeted services.
Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kathy Kelly. I'm here this evening to give an update about our targeted services programming during this past school year. The core value that really is uh, exemplified in our targeted services program is uh, definitely collaboration because of the work that we do throughout multiple departments in order to provide uh, this programming. And also in the schools, all three elementaries and Columbia Academy are involved with targeted services programming after school. We work uh, using the s- the teachers in our district that um, offer to, to teach additional classes uh, for enrichment for our students. And so some great collaboration happening throughout our district for this programming. Targeted Services is a program that's offered to students who qualify for the programming. So I thought that I might just mention a little bit that whereas in previous years where we had the encore programming, which was open to all students, this year we focused, we focused on our targeted services programming using targeted services funds uh, that MDE, the Minnesota Department of Education determines which students are eligible. Some of the eligibility, though not all, are performing below performance levels for pupils of the same age. Um, speaking English as a second or um, language or as an English learner. Uh, perhaps the student has experienced homelessness, um, has been truant or other qualifications as the school administration deems. So there are other identifying features that uh, teachers and administrators might be able to use to determine that this would be a positive program for students. At our elementary, uh, the focus is really on math and reading. And we had grade-specific classes using curriculum that was identified through the Department of Teaching and Learning um, to support the students so that they could move to grade level achievement. At Highland, uh, we added the before-school programming, which they had not done in previous years. We had forty-three participants before school, working on math skills. And in after-school programming, we had a hundred and eighty-four participants. At North Park, because of the time that the buses arrived, we weren't able to do before-school programming. But the after-school programming had a hun- a hundred and forty-one participants. At Valley View, before school, sixty-two participants and after-school, a hundred and forty-eight participants. So a lot of students involved in our programming. That programming started at the beginning of October and concluded at the end of April. Uh, the morning programming at Valley View just concluded last Friday. At Columbia Academy, the curriculum that we used was Operation College Bound. And uh, there were sixty-nine participants in that program. The content really focused on math skills, on also understanding important concepts that would be seen in some other standardized testing. And then also practicing strategies that would help them with uh, success in college or careers. That programming went from November through March. And that programming was a two-day program, so the students would enroll for both Wednesday and Thursday in order to have the full menu of services there. So that is, uh, that encapsulates our targeted services programs for our school district.
Thanks, any questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I was just going to have a comment, um, thank you so much for, for putting, for coordinating these programs. I, I can see that they're really incredibly valuable to these students um, that um, are capable of getting to where they need to be. They just maybe need a little bit of extra time and I think studies have shown that especially especially in reading is that every student's capable of it, it's just some need more than the forty minutes of class, they need that additional services. So I, I, I'm, I'm glad we're using our resources, our resource for this. It was nice to have the encore program because we had the additional money, but I, I think this is quite valuable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, both of you, I didn't see you really. I just, I didn't see you when you were, I saw you on the holiday.
I've been trying to be a little quiet this evening.
All right. And with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is overnight and out-of-state field trips. Board will present with information on overnight out-of-state field trips, and we're gonna have Director Burkas, Principal Robleski. Oh, Zina, I didn't see you sneaking up there, sorry.
Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, yes, not quite the same lineup as in your program, but distinguished members of the team here with me to talk about out-of-state and overnight field trips and looking ahead to the next school year. So of course, one of those areas where we're proud of being able to create worlds of opportunities for every learner in our trips as well that we take, and really looking, I think, with that to expand our community, to beyond just our classrooms and an immediate neighborhood, to the world around us. And so I'm gonna go through a field trip that you know about from this year for the middle school, and then Mr. Robleski, Principal Robleski will go through several different field trips or overnight trips for the high school next year, and then our last presentation is a trip through WMAP that Coordinator Stendick will present. But my first one is just to say that we're back with the request again to go to Concordia Language Academy. We've done two years, and you can see from year one and year two, same big smiles, just a really wonderful trip for our kids to the language villages at the Concordia Language Academy, where they are immersed in Spanish, they get to do that in a very active and fun way with native Spanish speakers. So it's, it's one of those trips that is motivating for our kids, it's something they look forward to. It's a way for them to stay focused and work hard all year in order to be able to qualify for that trip. Basic information as in previous years, it'll be available then to our grade, eighth-grade students taking Spanish one. It'll be in March as in this past year, and you can see the cost there that we're hoping we can keep that cost relatively low. They have done some great fundraising efforts, wanna give real big thanks to our booster club as well that has really helped to make this all possible. So they are very excited and hopeful that we can get your approval again for this trip and make it an annual event for our, our middle school Spanish students. So I'm gonna pass the baton now, I'm sorry, oh, there is a little bit more here on the fundraising, sorry, I forgot. So what are the, some of those things? Selling calendars, selling tickets for meat raffles, bake sales at Columbia Academy, basketball games, bracelets, halftime fundraiser at games, so, and all of this is really to go for the, the group as a whole. So everybody goes through this, it's, it's not that someone's gonna get left out if they don't make as much money as someone else. So they're very committed to this, very well organized with their teacher, Marie Nelson, and I think we know now through two very successful years that they're capable of raising the money and being ready to go. So now, I will hand it over to Principal Robleski to talk about some different, different trips for the choir. In fact, all three, I believe, that he's presenting are on different trips for the choir.
Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. We are excited this year to have a student who's been selected for the all-state mixed choir, Elijah Vanderpoel, and that will be happening, I believe, in August of this year, and the date has not yet been set, but it is in August, and it's up at Concordia University Morehead. So we will be fundraising for him, and he will be participating in that festival. The other trip that we have, we have two more trips. The other one is the O'Clare Choir Festival, which will be, last year, we went to this festival, we took, I believe, Activities Director Miller went on this trip as well. We had fifteen, twelve to fifteen students who are participating again this year in that project. What we have before us now is a proposal for our rotation for our, our seminar trips, which, as we've talked about before, previous meetings, the New York Seminar, and we've proposing a rotation for the next, I believe it's nine years where we're rotating in and out of our, our band and art and our choir and theater. And as you see, there's, to, to get on a path where our seniors would all have an opportunity to participate in a trip or a seminar to New York, we have in two thousand sixteen, it's our off-year in the rotation, but to make sure that all our students have an, an opportunity, we've, are presenting a choir trip only to Chicago this year, which is called the Windy City, Windy City Coral Festival. And that will be hap, happening April thirteenth through the seventeenth. Approximately fifty students, eleventh and twelfth graders are, who we're looking at, choir members. You can see the cost of four hundred and seventy-one dollars, and our fundraising would include rose sales at the choir concerts, entertainment books, I believe it's low-fat cookie dough, if cookie dough can be low-fat. We also have the concession stands, gift wrapping, bagging at Cub Foods, and they're also proposing the district meals during district and service days. And here's just who, during this trip, they'll have the opportunity to work with Director Z. Randall Stoop, and also performing at the Chicago's Historic Orchestra Hall in the Symphony Center.
So I believe the next one is through WMAP, and I'll ask Zina, or Coordinator Stendick, if she would.
So this upcoming, this upcoming school year, we have the opportunity to present, to participate in the Civil Rights Research Tour. This school year was the first time that WMAP was involved in the research tour. The year before, the couple of years before, it had been only hosted by Robbinsdale, so it was expanded to WMAP districts. The idea is that four high school students, along with one adult, team up with the other ten districts, and the students have to apply to participate in the Civil Rights Research Tour. And it's a bus trip down to some of our southern states, where students have the opportunity to visit the Civil Rights Museum, visit historically black colleges, they walk the Edmund Pettus Bridge, they go on various tours. Now, in order to participate in some of these very heavy topics for our students, they prepare, once they apply and they're accepted in the fall, then they prepare March, February and March on Saturdays, because they learn how to make a documentary film, and they learn how to do research and do some of the critical thinking that we're promoting in Avid. So really preparing the students to become leaders and young leaders and explore some difficult topics, right, in person. So they conduct a research project while they're there, with the ideas that they, the students come back and then work with their teachers on lessons in the, over the summer, like in June, for example. Like I said, it's part of WMAP, and WMAP funds the majority of the trip, but for the five participants, it would be a total of three thousand dollars for the full week, and that would, that covers, you know, the trip, the lodging, the travel, all of, all of those pieces.
So I believe those are the, the out-of-state and overnight trips that we are proposing, and of course, would be happy to answer any questions.
Maybe go in order, does anybody have any questions or comments regarding the Concordia Language Academy trip that they're proposing? Clarification or questions? Any questions about, I guess, the off-year?
I'm sorry, would you like to?
I guess we've got those two there. Keep going. And Principal Robleski talked about the Chicago trip, any questions on that?
I'm assuming you, you've chosen New York because of all the opportunities there as opposed to other cities, or what's the thinking behind that?
Well, with, with what New York has to offer, and having such great success this last time, the opportunities that presented themselves, it just kind of made sense to go back and have more students have that opportunity at this time. New York has, you know, we, we have a number of opportunities that if we would've had another week, we still wouldn't have seen everything that we wanted to see.
If I may, also in the off-years, for instance, if social studies wanted to do a DC trip to do something around government, there could be other trips going, so in the cycle, trying to make sure that there would be, while band and choir or theater were not traveling, that other people could go other places and see other things.
And you'll be bringing this to us sometime soon?
Yes, I'll be bringing it back, and as a, as an action item for you, I would imagine in our next board meeting.
I guess I have one more question, the fundraising, has, has there been any problems that you've seen at all with the fundraising in the past that we should be aware of?
I think our fundraising has been quite successful, and I think key is always getting out early, so I think that's the big thing. I, I feel that we will be out early now for these trips. The cost on these is, is, we were all, I think, really intrigued by the trip to Chicago, and when we saw that it was a very reasonable price, it really, I think, kind of made the sale for us on that. But having a plan like this as well, looking out all the way to twenty-twenty-two really provides that opportunity to plan ahead, and so that we're not scrounging at the last minute, but really able to have a solid fundraising plan. So I believe our community, as you know, has supported kids in so many different ways, through scholarships and also the amazing things, and especially going back again to our booster club and the incredible ways that they have supported these trips, but other individuals as well. I believe our, our fundraising is, is solid because we are in a good, a community, and with good planning on our part, I think it'll be, it'll work out well.
Any questions on the other one was the WMAP trip, the southern states?
I just have a comment. The students who went on that Civil Rights Research Tour this year presented to the Joint Powers Board, and they were just so animated, and it was just a fabulous experience for them to actually do the experiential learning and be in those places. So I am so glad to see this coming to our students.
I like the fact that you've got a plan out several years. I know that one of the things that came up when the band and art were going, what about choir, and what about this, and now, we had to start somewhere, and now moving forward, there's a plan that allows students in their career here at the high school, if they're participating in those, and maybe even other activities, as Superintendent Kelly mentioned, that to, to have those opportunities to travel. So thank you for taking the time to put some thought into coming up in the future.
Plus, it's motivational, I like that part.
Right.
They know what's coming up, they know they need to work hard, and it gives them inspiration.
I was looking figuring this out, so I don't know when it's gonna cost me money for one of my kids to go on a trip, so thank you for that, you know, little foresight, I appreciate that. I guess there's nothing else. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Next up, food service management bid. Board will present with information on the food service management bid. Director Holmgren.
Chairman Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly. Yes, we, we had mentioned to you a few months ago that we really were looking at a different way to manage our food service, and we've been down a little bit of a journey, trying to really look at food management companies and really look at the value that they bring and what would be best for our school district. We did have five bidders, so that was good news to us. We knew we had a lot of interest in our school district. Companies Sedexo, Chartwells, Lancer, Avianz, and Tahoe all bid. We visited with each one of them, went through a process where we, we look at not only just the cost, this isn't just the lowest cost is gonna get the contract. So forty percent of the points go to what the actual cost is from that company, twenty percent on their references, and then we looked at training, the, the budget forecast they put together, involvement with our student staff and parents, of course, the menus that they presented, fifteen percent for the onsite manager that would be stationed right here in our district every day, and then five percent on promotion of our program to our students. This piece here, I, I put it in your, it's also in your package, you may see it a little bit better, but this is the actual cost piece that they, they bid, and you can see that Lancer actually came in the, the least at a million twenty-five-hundred, Sedexo coming in a second at a million six thousand, and it goes up, goes up from there with Tahoe being the highest at, actually quite a bid at one point six million. But when we went through our score sheet and looked at all the references and so forth, Sedexo actually is the company that came out on top. They weren't the lowest cost, they were the second to lowest cost, with a, with a score of ninety, ninety-five and a half. Chartwells, a very similar company, when we did a site visit there with, with Chartwells, we really saw the, the quality of the food that they put out, put forth to their students. So a very close second. It was, it actually gets down to the end, it was really the, the cost piece that really pushed those two different, because Chartwells was a little bit higher in cost. Then Avianz, Lancer, and Tahoe, of course, coming in, in the next areas. Now, here's really some of the benefits, I wanna talk about some of the benefits that our students will see by bringing in a food management company. Of course, we see increased food choices. We would see a cellar bar on a regular day, we would see a sandwich bar on almost every single day. We see two choices, choices of entrees, where right now, our kids aren't getting anything near that. They actually bring out a chef on a regular basis and cook right out into the cafeteria and show the, show the kids how to do different recipes, a really cool idea. They have interaction with our students where there's a, an ongoing committee, they really look at what the kids are enjoying with menu items and really change it up to make sure our kids are enjoying it, all the meals that are being presented. They actually, when we talk about some of the new things out there, like our, our farmer's school programs, they actually are, are willing to go on field trips to these farms and actually help with the education piece of that. They're actually getting an investment by the vendor to some of our equipment pieces we need to update, actually, student scholarships that will be added to our scholarship program for our students, and they're actually getting a return back to the district and a guaranteed to break even. The way these contracts work is actually if, for some reason, their budget forecast was wrong and they actually lost money, they still have to write a check to us. We will not lose money, so that is a guarantee to us. So really, there's no down part on this, on going this way. And then a backpack program, Sedexo has started up in a different, we found it very interesting, and I think it really dovetailed nicely into some of the things that we're doing with the backpack programs here with our students. So really, for administrative recommendation, we really see Sedexo being the, the best choice. We'd like you to take action at our next meeting, June ninth, and we'd put them in a place by, by July first, so we're all set up and ready to go by September. Most of our summer school feeding this year is actually in June, so that part is kind of done before they come onboard, but they would give us, give them time to get everything set up. We'll, we'll see some, we'll see some changes for September. So is there any, any questions? We'll, we'll see some, we'll see some changes for September. So is there any, any questions?
What did you see between, uh, the difference between Sedexo and Lancer, other than the, the cost?
You know what? The, the biggest, the biggest things we saw, I think, when you, when you saw the differences in them, and when you went and talked to the school districts where they're working. Uh, a company like, uh, Lancer, they, they certainly serve food. They have, uh, multiple choices. But they didn't have the interaction with the students and, and when with parents, that piece really wasn't there. They didn't really have any, come to the district with some, um, new, um, incentives or new ideas. It was just kind of the same old, same old. That's what I was getting from the business managers and the, um, superintendents that I, I, you know, spoke to on all these companies. We, we called on all these companies, three, three school districts on each one of them.
And I see the difference is only thirty-five hundred dollars, so.
Yeah, the cost between the, yeah, the cost between Lancer and, uh, and, um, Sedexo, yeah, it's only, yeah, twenty-five hundred dollars. Yeah.
How does this impact our staff, current staffing then?
Uh, it actually doesn't impact our staffing at all. Uh, we would keep all our employees, um, keep our, our union just the way it is. Um, they just come in and manage the program. And what, I mean, they certainly work with our employees. They train our employees. They do all that whole training piece comes in. And they really have a, so, uh, some nice expertise to come in and do that training, where we really haven't had that, um, in the, in the last little while.
So staff is basically not affecting?
And I've talked to the staff, Superintendent, um, Kelly's, I talked to the staff, cause I, I know there was, you know, change is, you know, a little bit scary. But I think, um, after talking with them, they're understanding what we're trying to do. I think, you know, we're in pretty good place now. And, and with bringing them in, in July, it gives us time to introduce the new people and get to know each other a little bit before we're into the rush in, in September.
So do you think this is more cost effective than hiring a food service manager?
I do. And then that's really where the cost savings is coming. Um, these companies are relatively large. And when they buy product, they buy large pieces of product. And we are not in a position to do that. Um, we're, we're looking at at least a ten percent savings on our food costs right off the bat, and it could be more.
I just have one question. Um, uh, what about the cost, the, uh, the cost of each of the meals to the, to the, to the students, the parents? Is that going to change?
That, that, well, it will change. We talked about it during the budgeting a little bit where we do have to increase our food costs this next year, another ten cents. But the reason isn't because we're going to a management company. It's because the reimbursement we get from the federal government is more than we charge. And the federal government wants us to charge at least what they reimburse us for our free and reduced meals. Uh, so.
Sounds right.
So we need to, we, uh, every year we got bumped that ten cents. That's the minimum, ten cents until we hit that level. And actually it's going to take us a few years to get it up there.
Okay. I was just wondering, you know, if, if there was going to be a, a huge difference in that cost?
No, we're not going to bump that up. We're only going to do the minimum. That's all we're going to do.
Do we have any information on the, how the parents and the kids in, that are served by these different companies, how they felt about the meals and, and?
I, I did actually talk to some students. Um, and it was actually interesting. You could get that little different perspective. And everybody's been a little frustrated. As you know, the, the regulations have changed from the federal government and that's kind of rippled through all the school districts. But another thing about Sedexo, they really went, they went into the classrooms and really educate, educate the kids on why it was different. And after they get that understanding, then they're, they're pretty good to go. So yeah, I, I did, I didn't talk to any parents, but I did talk to some, uh, business managers that of course are parents with kids in their school districts. Uh, so they had a little different perspective too. So I, I think we had some, um, some very good talks on, uh, on the, on the companies.
Maybe they should do a taste test or something.
Actually, they do. Okay. And what was, what was, I've found very interesting is when they do look at a new product that they want to, um, have the kids try, they don't just all of a sudden, okay, here's the entree, try it. The, the day before they would try that, they actually put out small samples and have the kids try it. So then the next day they would actually take those, um, take the entrees and enjoy them.
Pretty cool. Went well?
Yeah, very well.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Next is Northeast Metro nine sixteen, financial information. Uh, Board will present it, uh, with financial information. This, I think, was actually at my request. I was hoping that we could get an idea, kind of not intentionally to put you on the spot last time we were talking. And just curious as we move forward, looking for some ideas on where the dollars are going, so.
Yeah, we're, I, I guess what, what we want to talk about tonight is, uh, twofold. We want to talk about the dollars again. We're going to talk about the total dollars. We also want to talk just slightly too on, on what kind of programs, um, that we are receiving for our, our students and what buildings that they're being used in. Um, again, we're, we're looking at our mission. You know, we are to create opportunities, uh, for all of our learners. And some of our, um, learners really need some specialized, uh, programming. So that's where District nine sixteen steps in. So when we look at our core values, we're really looking at, um, collaboration with the District nine sixteen and some excellence definitely in their programming. Now I'm going to have, um, Director Hallaby kind of go through the, the different buildings and what they work on. But you can see the numbers of the students that we have right now currently, um, in these programs.
We have twenty-eight students that are participating in nine sixteen in their programs. And just to back up for a second, um, for people who might be watching, there are three intermediate districts in that cover all the metropolitan area. And, um, the schools are nine seven and nine sixteen. And, um, as you know, we belong to nine sixteen. And, um, uh, Carner Blue, um, which Member Palmer is very familiar with, and Superintendent Kelly, we went to the groundbreaking and had some tours there. It's an amazing building. It was built, um, because our students in Columbia Heights and the other students in the northern districts that needed that kind of specialized, um, programming, were having to go all the way down, um, to Woodbury. So, um, they are also building a new facility down in the southeast too, but, um, Carner Blue is a beautiful building in Blaine. South Campus, um, serves kids who are of transition age who have, um, high need. Capital View ALP is for students with emotional and behavioral disorder with high need. Um, that is in Little Canada. Uh, the CAP is in that program as well for kids, um, with ASD, Autism Spectrum Disorder. Um, Bel Air, uh, is in White Bear off of County Road E, and that is also where the headquarters is, um, the offices where Laura, um, Director Palmer goes for her board meetings. Um, and they have an excellent program there for students with multiple needs. Um, Wells North is for seven, uh, students, grade seven to twelve in White Bear Lake as well. And the Willows is a seven twelve program in Blaine. So as you can see, we have a total of twenty-eight students that are attending, um, programs that we would not be able to provide in such a small district like Columbia Heights. And that really is the primary function, um, when we talk about special ed. The primary function for the intermediates is because, um, districts cannot provide, um, the quality of service, the facilities, et cetera, the staffing, um, that the students need. Um, I don't know if you have a slide on there also about career and tech. So that's the special ed piece. And then obviously our students that attend Columbia Heights High School have the option if they choose to attend at no cost to them, uh, some of the career and tech programs um, that are, um, on the campus, um, at Century College, right off of County Road E.
I added the, the bottom bullet, just so you have an idea, um, you know, the, the very specialized programming that these students get and just get an idea of the cost. So you can see that, uh, the, the twenty-eight students that we have there will cost us about one point nine million, um, dollars this year. So when we talk about the buildings, I mean, that's just a small piece compared to what, what the programming is for these students. So the, uh, building plans, I mean, Carner, um, Carner Blue, that building is done. Actually, we had a meeting there too. I got a little tour of that building. Very, very nice, um, state of the art building. Um, they did a very good job with it. But the other two projects, of course, we're looking at is, uh, Lake Elmo and, uh, Capital View, which we talked a little about, about last time. And then the option of whether Capital View should be looking at some type of remodel or go ahead and build a brand new building. Um, so the, the question from the board really came is, well, how much money is actually going towards, um, these programs and, and this new, the new projects? Um, so right now, in two thousand fifteen, um, we're paying seventy-five, a little over seventy-five thousand dollars, um, for lease levy or for, um, paying off debt of, that nine sixteen has. Um, so you can see in two thousand sixteen, the year, um, will be, our tax year will just be going into, will be, remain the same. Um, but then in two thousand seventeen, that's when you start seeing some of the, um, the new debt, uh, come on our rolls. So we'll be going from the seventy-five up to a hundred and forty-four. And then when you get to, uh, two thousand nineteen, that's where you'll see the change and the difference, whether the remodeling happens at Capital View or whether it's a brand new building. And on the right, you can see the brand, if it's a brand new building, a hundred and sixty-nine, uh, a yearly basis, whereas the remodel will be at a hundred and fifty-three. And then I just, since, you know, I get so busy on the screen, I kind of skip ahead five years at a time, just so you can see. Once you hit those levels, they kind of stay the same, especially on the remodeling side, you know, a hundred and fifty-three is pretty much what it is until the, the debt is paid off. Um, on the new building, they did tier it a little bit, um, with the idea that as the years go on, um, there's more tax dollars, um, that come in because of, of the inflation. So the payments actually increase a little bit over the years. Um, but the difference though between the two, you look, um, with the remodeling in Capital View, we're at three, three point four million. And with the new building, we're at, uh, three point eight and a half. So there's about four hundred and fifty thousand, um, difference on that project over the whole, the whole twenty-three years we're talking about. I mean, it's, it's twenty-year debt, um, for the new projects. Okay? And then I want to touch back on what we talked about last time. You know, we talked about the tax impact and what really is a tax impact to our taxpayers? And when you look at a hundred thousand dollar home and you look out to, uh, you know, the biggest piece of it out there in twenty twenty, you'll see that we're going from, you know, just under four dollars on a yearly basis, up to seven dollars, seven, almost eight dollars. So it's about a four dollars per year difference in what they're paying now on a hundred thousand dollar home. And that's close to the average of the hose, the housing value in Columbia Heights. Of course, as you go down the list, you see a hundred and fifty thousand dollar, dollar home and a two hundred thousand dollar home, where, um, you see that the, of course, the spread's a little bit bigger. Um, so it, it is definitely a, a new or an increased tax to our taxpayers. But when you look on a yearly basis, it's, uh, you know, just a few cents on a monthly basis. So.
Per year?
That's a per year, per year. Um, so it gives you, I think, an idea of what is affecting our taxpayers, but yet you'll still see the total dollars that are, will be going over to nine sixteen to pay off that debt on those buildings. So hopefully that's helpful, um, from the questions that you had last year.
Ask a couple, the, going backwards to the one point nine million that we're currently paying, some of that's reimbursed. Is that not the case? I mean, some of the, the funds for the special ed is at?
Approximately half of those funds are reimbursed by the state of Minnesota.
Okay. Currently, right now?
Yeah. The, the formula's in the process of changing, but right now we get, uh, I believe it's fifty-four percent of any contracted service.
It's about half right now?
Yeah.
And then you mentioned, and then maybe I misunderstood you, but was it two thousand eighteen you said that's when the new or remodel monies would be?
Yeah, two, no, two thousand seventeen, the tax year two thousand seventeen is we'll see, um, a relatively large jump and from what we're paying right now. And then you'll see another, uh, two years later, you'll see another increase with the second project coming on.
So two thousand seventeen was that tax year?
Yeah, so, yeah, two thousand seven, the tax year two thousand seventeen is we'll, we'll see a jump and then again in two thousand nineteen.
And are these all things, and maybe Laura can answer this question better, are these all things that are scheduled that they're going to move forward? Or where, at what point do we, if we need to have as a board, an individual board, have any input on, um, what's taken place there?
I, I think that in particular, in, in this particular case as far as Capital View is concerned, I, I'm trying to do my very best to bring as much information here so I can get ongoing feedback, okay, as things come up.
And I think you have done really good job of bringing stuff back.
Yeah, because I mean, it's, it's, there, there are decisions that are going to need to be made. Um, the, the real problem is, we, one, one thing to take into consideration is remodeling may very well not be an option at all because, um, they actually legally can't do it unless they want to do the remodel and basically bill it all out to the districts the same year. That's what they would actually have to do. And, and how much would that be to our, our district?
Yeah, you're absolutely correct. The, at least levy cannot be used for any type of remodeling. It can only be used for new spaces.
Right.
One, one thing I, with talking with, um, with, um, the Director of Finance that they have over there, one thing I suggested, I mean, one thing I'd like to see. Um, first of all, I think we would like to see it a little more equalized. The smaller districts are paying more than the bigger districts on a per capita basis for the tax. Um, I know that the big districts are really pushing back on that, but at the same time, um, we are paying more on a per capita basis. Um, that's one thing. The second thing, I think we should look at maybe some thirty-year debt, cause that would really decrease the per year. It would, it would make it, I mean, over the long term, we're going to pay a little more interest, but the impact is going to be less on a yearly basis.
I mean, just for clarification, I am, I'm not questioning remodeling versus new. I mean, I think what, based on the information that Laura's presented, that new is probably the best way to go. I guess I'm going one step further, one step back and saying is, is this the best fit for us moving forward based on the cost versus the services that are provided to our students? And that's kind of, this sounds like it's a little bit down the road. That's why I wanted to at least initiate this conversation for the board is, I've been there. The programs that they, that they, they're, are great programs. So it's not a question of that. It's just as, you know, you talk about your return on investment is kind of a direction that we've been, or it's, it's terminology we've been using. And I'd rather have the discussion early on is, is this a good deal? Is this a good service? And then leave it up to you to figure out how we're going to make those numbers happen. But knowing what it really is costing us per student and what we're getting for services and is it the best option for our kids? So that, creating an open discussion earlier versus later, so we're nine, we had the same conversations with WMEP, you know, what's best for our district? And what do we have Laura take back to that board, you know, representing how we feel? And that's, that's where I'm trying to go with this and, and asking the questions that I've been asking. So it's not a question of as a group, we decide this is definitely a, the way to go. I'm not trying to help them decide whether they need to remodel or build new. That's not where my questions are coming from. So, and I appreciate you taking the time. So I, I've gotten for now the information I was looking for, but I would certainly leave it open to anybody else that has any questions for you guys.
I would say just for clarity, this, this is ultimately a decision for the, the nine sixteen Joint Powers Board to decide, correct?
Yeah, the, the Joint Powers Board definitely is the one, uh, they're the group voting on these projects. But they're still a representative of the local school boards, of the consortium.
But we have one vote on that?
Yeah. That's correct.
But do we also have the option of being involved with that, with nine sixteen? Is that an option to not be, is my question? I mean, we may have one vo, and I'm not saying that that's the direction we want to go. Again, I want to have these discussions as board members moving forward is, is nine sixteen the way to go for us? I recognize we only have one board. Um, but we have, I, I'm at, do we have the ability?
There, there are, there are other, um, consortiums of special ed services. But when we look at the, um, actual cost of the tuition that we pay for our students, actually nine sixteen is not the highest at all. We're, we're seeing some higher tuition rates from, from different districts. So when we look at the value, I think we're getting the value that we need at nine sixteen.
Those are truly the questions that I have, that I'm looking for because we're going to be, taxes are going to be going up. We're almost doubling from sixteen to two thousand seventeen. And people are going to want to know, you know, what's going on with that. So I'd like to be able to answer their questions. So again, I'm not questioning the value of the program. I want to have the discussion now. So when people say, you know, what's up with that, that we can say we've had that conversation and we're good with this, or we're going to do this, or whatever the case may be. So I'm not anti-nine sixteen at all. It's not the case.
But I, I just have one other comment too. Um, uh, it's, it, over the past couple of years since I've been on the board, we've had a lot of new, um, a lot of districts that have actually joined this collaboration. Every single time a new district comes on, it actually disperses these costs, these capital projects. So something to keep in mind is I think that there's been three districts that have, that have come on just within the past couple of years. And I think we might possibly have one more coming up too. So that helps to dilute some of these. So these numbers could even change. Obviously they could go up, you know, they could also.
Cause districts could leave just as easily as they join.
Right, cause it's spread out amongst the districts because we all share in these costs. Um, I think one of the other things with nine sixteen is I think its location with their programs is just better for our students as well. From what I could tell from nine seventeen and two eighty-seven, that they, that the travel was quite a bit more significant. So I'm, 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 am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, nine seventeen is in the far southern suburbs.
Yeah, we're, that's a, a distance. Um, the other option would be to do our own programming, which would be.
That would be cost prohibitive. We don't have the space. We don't have the staff and we.
I would say we just don't have the economies of scale.
Right.
It's some, some of those student populations require more than one person with them. You'd have to create an entire environment for some of those students. And we have the economy there.
I was just going to say, if I may, that I think that Bill gave on the Director.
I was just going to say, if I may, that I think that Bill gave the director of finance at nine sixteen some good advice, and I'm going to be going to meet with superintendent Hayes. And I just think if you're a smaller district, this is a lot to absorb, and a little pushing back on some of the bigger districts while we're in the discussion stages, it's, you know, it's called negotiating. It's not a bad thing. I think the really wise advice that Bill gave her was, look at thirty-year debt, so that it just brings it down for everybody. And if that, I certainly will make that suggestion to superintendent Hayes, and if that would come up. I think that's a really smart way, it doesn't, it doesn't cut into anybody too deeply at any one time. Now, there may be, there may be a downside to that, that they're seeing that we're not, but at least for us, it's a case to be made.
I agree with John on this, though. It is community, you know, our community's not going to have the impact on this, you know, with the taxes going up, correct? I mean, it'll just be the one vote that happens at nine sixteen. And so I think it's, it's good that we're discussing this now, and keep it, you know, keep discussing it and seeing what's going to transpire. So I appreciate that. So thanks.
This is still a ways, well, I mean, I guess that goes back to my question, is this a done deal? You're presenting numbers for the tax year 2017, saying this is what it's going to be.
They definitely look at the numbers so they can present to the board what it's going to be, because they want to want to move on this sooner than later, because of the need of a change over at Capital.
Yeah, I think from what I understand, it is a couple of things might have come up. One is, is the further deterioration of the actual mechanics of the building, that's a consideration, and the need to make sure that the students have, have more stable environments. So if that goes down, and of course, they're also projecting construction costs to increase rather significantly. I did bring the book into the district office, and I do think that everybody needs to really take a look at some of the things where they were, the, 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 the projection for the increase in cost can be very fairly significant over the next couple of years. So, I mean, we might be looking at a, you know, what is it, thirty-six million dollar building, and then the following year, they're like projecting it up to like, you know, thirty-nine, and then forty-three, and they're expecting it to increase exponentially. So I think maybe that's part of the reason, too, is, is that we're better off taking the bite off now, we're just paying more in interest rather than having to add those additional costs on.
Okay, and that's different, I guess I'm hearing you different than from the previous time. I got the understanding that this was a ways down the road, that decisions are going to be made. So do we know when they're going to be, I mean, do you have a specific timeframe? Do you have any idea when they're going to try and decide on this?
Well, my understanding is that they're going to want a decision by, you know, sometime this fall. They want to move on it by next summer.
That's a big difference from two years. Hmm. Any questions or comments at this point? Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up is the Castle Heights Playground and Director Holmgren.
We talked about, talked about this somewhat last week at our, at our work session. The Castle Heights has, has been around since nineteen ninety-two. The district really has worked very hard the last few years trying to prolong the usage of this playset. Actually, quite a bit of money has been spent on it to preserve it. The district experience, though, increasing injuries, and some of these injuries that our students are getting are actually very serious, and it's really making it difficult to be able to use this playset. So regrettably, really, the time has come that we need to replace Castle Heights with a new playset. We're not saying it's going to go away, but we need something different, something replacing what is there. From a distance, the playset still looks great. I know when my children were younger, we went all over the state of Minnesota, and we find these here and there, and the kids had a lot of fun on them. What's happening is, the lumber is really starting to deteriorate. And you can see here, pretty much the end of every single board, you know, there's chips, and it's getting worse. The screws, because of the way the kids run, and it's got a little bit of movement, and the screws slowly unscrew. Even though we go through this every week, looking for screws and tightening them back down, they work themselves right back up again. So this is really where the danger is when we talk about our students, and they're coming in contact with these screws and nails sticking up a little bit. What we did five years ago is, we did come in and we put tracks on all the walking area of it to make it safer. But what's happened, as it moves, you can see here, we have cracks running all the way down on all these tracks because of the movement. Whoop, hang on, get ahead of myself here. And you can see that the corners are breaking out. And when these, these pieces break out, then the screw is left there sticking up about an inch. That's where some of the dangers are. This is one of the slides, one of the older slides, because some of the slides have been replaced out there. But here, one student came down, his tennis shoe got caught in this little notch here, and of course, his body kept going, so he really hurt his leg quite, quite badly. Here we're seeing all over, these large, large splinters are coming off of our two-by-fours, and we've had students with large splinters, like a foot long, stuck in their hands. So these are kind of the dangers we're talking about. Here's an example, if you look here, here's where a two-by-four broke off, and of course, there's a nail sticking out here. That's not, I mean, a tripping hazard, but if any type of, you know, leg or arm comes across this, we have big cuts in a hurry. And again, it is a wood structure, and you see here that this was actually on fire at one time. Luckily, we got it out, but there's a hazard there also. So what we really want to do is replace the playset that's there, and really with two different types of playsets. First of all, this is an example of something that would be used for our two-year-olds to our five-year-olds. So it's geared for them and their play. And this is more what we'd be looking at putting in for our children from age five then up to age twelve. It's not, won't look exactly like this, but I wanted you to get a good feel of what it looks like. Next, what we have here is more of an overview on top. So we would be putting new swing set in. This is another swing, swing apparatus, and here is the other apparatus we talked about, I just showed you. We would be putting small roofs on these corner areas like here and here, so you'll still get that Castle Heights look, where you get that peak on top. And you can see how we would then put the small playset here on the end. More, more side view, a little better idea of what it would look like. So it's hard to show you exactly what it looks like, but this is the plan that we're working with right now. I think it really is, it's a, it's a great replacement for what we have. It's not exactly the same size, but it's not, it's not too far off. So I guess I'm just, I'm open to questions on the playset itself.
I guess just for, we keep using the word transparency, the estimated cost of-
I do, I do have a slide for cost. It's a little scary. Some things we can do with health and safety. So our removal and disposal, looks like eighteen thousand dollars, we can use health and safety funds to take care of that. Site restoration, we don't have a hard cost on this, but we can use health and safety dollars, it's probably around thirteen thousand dollars. But then we're going to have to use capital dollars, though, for our site preparation, and then the two playsets. Actually, the safety surfacing, we've, we've been told by the state of Minnesota that we can use ninety thousand dollars of health and safety to cover that, in that hundred and nineteen. So that, the safety surfacing fees will only cost us approximately thirty thousand dollars of our capital dollars. And of course, then we have installation, we'll have to use capital to do that. So we have a total of two hundred and eighty-four thousand, almost two hundred and eighty-five. With, like I say, this will be a little higher, because it's going to be about thirteen, so it's going to be close to three hundred thousand when we're done with all the cost, with the health and safety coming in at around a hundred and eight, and the actual capital cost at a hundred and seventy-five. But I think when we all, when we're done, number one, we're going to have a very safe playset, and we're going to have something very similar to the size. This is geared for over a hundred kids at a time, so there's room for everyone to, to have a space to play.
You said the site restoration is health and safety as well, so that guesstimate of thirteen thousand, that would be, would fall under that as well?
Yeah, would fall under health and safety.
So bottom line, the capital number is pretty hard.
The capital is pretty hard at this point.
Questions or comments from the board?
I just want to point out, I think you said at our work session that you would be able to use some of the equipment that's going to be here through, in the summer when the horseshoe is redone. Is that still true?
No, because of the safety concerns for the playset, it won't be available to children in this summer. The idea is to take it down immediately, sooner than later, because we don't want any more injuries. I mean, that's really the bottom line when we're talking about this, because of the injuries that we've had on our students, and we don't want any more to happen. So, no, it will not be available this summer.
Did I understand your question, Ted, that with the, the construction equipment that's currently on site, is that what you're-
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you said.
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry. Yes, it saved us, it saved us a few dollars, actually, by using the excavation crew that we have here working on the horseshoe project to take care of the excavation back here.
Okay. And when would that start?
Well, we're, we're not going to start any of the construction until July first, because of summer academy coming in and using these two buildings. We really aren't in a place with all that traffic where we can start digging up our driveway. So that's going to have to wait till after the Fourth of July, that Monday after the Fourth, Fourth is Saturday, right? Sixth, get the right date. That was when we'll start.
And is that then when you're thinking of starting to take down Castle Heights?
Okay, well, actually, Castle Heights will come down earlier.
Okay.
They'll bring their equipment in and start taking that down as soon as school's out, as soon as we don't have any, you know, students running, running close by.
I do want to point out, too, that there is a tire swing in the plans, so-
Yes.
That was a big part of Castle Heights for many children, so I'm glad to see that.
Yeah, we definitely had some ads, asks, and we added some. You see, the price has gone up a little bit when we talked about it the other night, but I think we really have a nice, a nice set to be put up.
Good question. Can you, can you inform how much the repairs were for the Castle Heights now to be replaced, like, per year?
Well, when we put the tracks on, that was one big item at the time. That was over thirty thousand dollars that we put into the playset. And since then, we've been spending about five thousand dollars a year, just trying to keep it up so it can be used.
Okay. And then also, is there a plan to, like, make it blue and gold?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, I didn't mention that. Yes, the playset is planned to be blue and gold, so it should match our student, our student, our, our school colors, and I think it'll look great.
And we are keeping the name Castle Heights, correct?
We should have a little plaque all the way outside with the old Castle Heights on a plaque, right in front of the, right in front of the new structure.
We have a plaque at Highland, and we're thinking about doing some kind of a plaque or memorial to the, a nod to the other one as well.
I think that's a lovely idea.
Any other questions for Bill regarding the new replacement?
A comment, what a, what a great structure that's been for so many years, and all the effort that went into building it has really been a great addition to our community.
All right, I have one more question. Is there any plans, like, if the community can be involved with helping build it, like the original one?
Well, because of liability reasons, we, we hire a contractor to put it up, and they take on all the liability if something would happen. When we bring the, when they bring the, you know, community members in and do it, then the liability all sits back on the school district. So from, at least from my point of view, it's a lot safer for the school district, just to bring the installers to come in and get it done and be done. I understand there's people that would like to help.
I, I was just asked that question, so I thought I would bring it up so that you could explain it. So that's, you know, I totally understand that.
And Bill? Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Next up is a first reading for board policies. Four twenty-seven workload limits for certain special education teachers. Five oh nine enrollment of non-resident students. Six eighteen assessment of student achievement. Six nineteen staff development for standards. Seven oh one point one modification of school district budget. Seven oh nine student transport safety policy. Eight oh five waste reduction and recycling. Eight oh six crisis management policy. Eight oh seven health and safety policy. Nine oh five advertising. These policies will appear, will appear on a future agenda for approval. Any questions?
Uh, yes. Four twenty-seven, is that a brand new policy? I do not recognize it.
It looks like it.
Yes.
Yes, Member Palmer, it is. The legislature kind of batted around whether they should require a set number, and the feedback that they got from MACE, which is my organization, the Minnesota Association of Special Educators Administrators, was that each district should have their own control. So it's just in the books as a point of discussion that management will consider as we're staffing for every year.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Are there any major changes other than statutory changes in the policies?
No. I think most of the stuff that we changed, and you guys can concur that, but I think everything that was discussed was things that either MSBA recommended or based on statute, or changes in those.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, good. Moving on to action items. Action item A, board policies, second reading. Five oh one, school weapons. Five oh two, search of student lockers, desks, personnel, personal possessions and persons. Five oh three, student attendance. Five oh six, student discipline. Five oh six, form. Five fourteen, bullying prohibition. Five twenty-four, internet acceptable use and safety. Five twenty-six, hazing. Six oh three, curriculum development. Six oh four, instructional, instructional curriculum. These policies appeared on the May twelfth meeting for the first reading, and approval will be sought at tonight's meeting, so I will ask for a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Is that Molly?
Yes.
Thank you.
Second.
Grant. Any discussion?
Have we received any comments?
Yes. Chair Larkin, Vice Chair Landwehr, we, in looking at six thirteen, it has been pulled from second reading and been re-referred to the subcommittee on school board policy, because when we were looking at the credits, it's a policy with regard to credits, we wanted to make sure that the changes we are making were accurate, and we wanted to make sure the subcommittee looked at it one more time. So it is not on as an action item tonight, it will be back to subcommittee, and then pop back on once it's been reviewed to second reading.
Thank you.
Anybody else? You hear none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion curious. Next up, Minnesota State High School League membership. Mr. Miller. Good evening.
Chair Larkin, Superintendent Cathy, and members of the board. Tonight, I'm going to be short and sweet, and I am going to ask for a resolution on the renewal of the state, Minnesota State High School League membership. This is an annual resolution that I will, that I present to you.
Good, got it right here. Okay.
I'll take any questions, if you have questions.
Okay. Yeah, we'll, maybe we'll get it opened up here. If I get a motion to move this forward.
Forward.
Member Landwehr, a second?
A second.
Second by Molly?
Molly.
Okay. And I'll read the resolution, and then we'll ask if there's any questions here. It says, formal approval by governing board of Columbia Heights School District must be given prior to August first, two thousand and fifteen, to enable the league office to certify continued membership of the State High School League. See the state resolution that's attached. Resolution for the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen membership in the Minnesota State High School League, resolve that the governing board of school district thirteen, county of Anoka, number thirteen, county of Anoka, state of Minnesota, delegates the control, supervision, and regulation of inter-schoolastic athletic and fine arts events referred to in Minnesota statutes, section one two eight C dot zero one, to the Minnesota State High School League, and so hereby certifies to the state commissioner of education as provided for by Minnesota statutes. Further resolve that Columbia Heights High School is authorized by this, the governing board of said school district to renew its membership in the Minnesota State High School League, and participate in the approved interschool activities sponsored by said league and its various subdivisions. Further resolve that this governing body hereby adopts the constitution bylaws, rules, and regulations of said league, and all amendments thereto- and all amendments thereto as the same as are published in the latest edition of the league's official handbook. On file at the office of the school district or as appears on the league's website as the minimum standards governing participation in said league-sponsored activities, and that the administrative responsibility for determining student eligibility and for supervision of such activities are assigned to the official representative identified by the governing board. Questions? I was a multiple at 910. Questions or comments?
Oh, I just have one question. What are, I mean, we pay fees on this as well?
We do.
Is that included with the, or does that come up at a different time? Because I don't have a, I don't know how much we're paying.
It's roughly $5,000 annually.
Okay, thank you.
We do this like every year, right?
Every year, yep.
It's the only league to participate in, correct?
Yes. We don't want to go anywhere else.
I figured that.
I just want to say, I, I'm not happy with the High School League's actions, especially recently with its policies. It is the only show in town, so our students would be at a huge disadvantage, I believe, if we didn't participate in this.
Correct. We would have to play against ourselves.
Okay. That's just real.
Yeah.
Guaranteed to have a winning season.
Okay, with that, anybody else?
I just had one thing to say, that although we pay $5,000 in fees, many times for our students, we will get a mini grant that will be equal to that. So it's at no cost to us. It's a wash.
Yes, to piggyback on that, Superintendent Kelly, they do look at our free and reduced numbers. They do give a kickback. So ultimately, it is a wash. It's, we don't, we don't pay much to the Minnesota State High School League.
No, it's just in the interest of just bringing it up, because it's a membership.
Good question. Good question. Okay, anybody else?
Do we have any influence in the governorship of Minnesota High School League that you know?
Well, I'm a part of the Region 5AA, and there's a board member present. We meet monthly on that. So there is items that I can present in that meeting that can get to the board level, but I don't sit on that, on the board.
Okay, thank you.
All right, being a resolution, Laura, if you would do a roll call, please?
Nichols?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Landwear?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.